So let's get going and hopefully the rest will join us soon. I don't see Kirsten and I don't see Kathleen Mahoney. But. So we'll call or order the Village of East Dundee regular board meeting dated Monday, November 2nd, 2020 at 6:00 PM. Catherine, you call the roll, please.
Trustee Linum.
Here.
Trustee Sallop.
Here.
Trustee Wood. Trustee Mahoney. Trustee Andreessen.
Here.
Trustee Coonzie.
Here.
And President Miller.
Here. Okay, we will forego the Pledge of Allegiance. I don't see anybody on here from the public, but I will suggest that we have public comment on agenda items only if there is anybody out there and I'm just not seeing it. Okay. If I can have a motion for the consent agenda item, we have two, two items on here.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular village board meeting minutes dated September 28th, 2020. And a motion to approve an ordinance approving the plat of easement, vacation and abrogation for the property commonly known as 401 Christina Drive.
Second that.
All right. Catherine. Catherine.
Trustee Linum.
Yes.
Trustee Sallop.
Yes.
Trustee Wood, Trustee Mahoney, Trustee Andreessen.
Yes.
Trustee Coonzie.
Yes.
Hey, very good. That takes us on to the three items, excuse me, three items we have on our agenda for consideration this evening. If I can have a motion on item A, please.
I'll move to approve an ordinance granting temporary relief from certain signage requirements in chapter 156 of the Village of East Dundee Village Code regarding the use of banner signs and flags by businesses.
Okay. Any discussion on this?
Yeah, I'd just like to know how many people have asked for it. I mean, it's just, it says in the agenda, just, you know, one, one business approached us. I mean, this is a temporary thing. I take it too, correct?
Correct.
So I'm not really understanding the point.
Well, we asked all our businesses if there was anything that we could help support them during this time, and one of them came up with a suggestion. I'm not sure that there is only one that would take advantage of it. There may be more. But if it's, even if it's just for one business, if it helps them out, it's really no skin off our teeth.
No, certainly not, but I think there are better ways to help, but okay.
If they ask us, we shall consider it. This is, this was the response. Okay.
So basically what it does, it just allows our businesses to use banners like, so it's not just the first 30 days. They can pretty much do it during the time of disaster.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Hey, Leo, it's Kirsten. I just wanted to know you to know I'm on.
I see you, Kirsten. Thanks. I see you, Kathleen, too.
Thank you.
Okay. So that was, for those of you that joined us a little late, that was item 5A on our agenda. Did anybody have anything that you wanted to discuss on that, either Kirsten or Kathleen?
Nothing for me. Thank you.
Okay.
Is this automatically sunset or do we have to readdress it?
So the, the relief is in effect so long as the governor has a disaster proclamation active regarding COVID-19. So yes, there's an auto sunset on it.
Okay.
Okay, Kathleen.
Trustee Linum.
Yes.
Trustee Sallop.
Yes.
Trustee Wood.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
You're on mute, Kathleen.
Yes. Trustee Andreessen.
Yes.
And Trustee Coonzie.
Yes.
Good. That takes us on to item B. If I can have, oh, this was a discussion, I guess. So Jennifer, you want to take this? You're on mute also.
Okay, now. Sure. Well, the painting of the depot by Trustee Linum, thank you again for that work, brought up the discussion by the village board about the signage for the building. So we did approach Meyer Sign to prepare the depot sign over the front doors on the east side to ask them for a proposal on what a sign would be for the west side of the building. And we've included that proposal in your packet and also a view of what the sign would look like on the west side. We are recommending that we add this sign and repaint the east and west signs, or the east Dundee and west Dundee signs that are on the north and south side of the building and leave the depot sign because it is fairly new and it closely matches the branding. However, the proposal does include additional costs if we wanted to go ahead and replace all of the signs. We certainly could do that. We're leaving that up to the board. This is an unbudgeted item, but at the recommendation we have of $1,100, it's not a significant expense and we can absorb it in the budget. I don't know if you have any questions about this?
Well, I guess my question was, can we use, I know we, when we used the money from Otto for the banners, we didn't use all of the money. Can we use some of that money for this?
Sure. Yeah, we can. That's a great idea. We can certainly book this against that donation.
And honestly, to do all, all of them, it's only $5,000 to do all, all four of them.
Yes.
I would just go ahead and do all four of them. If we're going to rebrand, I, I would be in favor of rebranding and doing all of them and doing them, all of them right and having them kind of all work together.
I agree.
Yeah, but by the time I understand the need to replace the east side, the one on the east side gable above the main entrance. And quite frankly, the signs that I took down on the north and south ends, those can be recovered. We don't have to spend the money to redo those. If we wanted to get the, the new logo on the west side, that wouldn't be a problem, but we can, we can recycle, reuse the lettering for the north and the south end ga, uh, gables and then just leave the east. There's no need to, to, to buy any of this stuff, guys. The whole point of this was to save the money and to not have to deal with the capital improvements line item for the depot that continued to be kicked down the road. So my suggestion would be to let me take those signs that we have over with Phil's guys and just rebuild them. It wouldn't be a difficult thing to do and then we can just mount them back up ourselves on the north and south ga, uh, gable and then leave the east side alone. Just by the, just by the west side logo, the new logo one that's on, that's facing Diamond Gems and leave it at that.
Yeah, because once the north and south side ones are refurbished, they're going to look like they're new anyway.
Exactly. And then, and there's nothing wrong with the lettering. I've taken a look at those signs. They're, they're in perfect shape. And it wouldn't take much, it wouldn't take much work to just reconstruct the substrate backing for them, remount it and put it back up there. It's really not that big a deal and it would save the town probably about $4,000. I mean, yeah, in the grand scheme of things, five grand is not a lot, but five grand would have got the building painted. Five grand would get us new gutters. Five grand would get us all the repairs where, you know, the whole deal is that it adds up.
Okay. So let's see if we can just get a show of hands from the board who said, who physically raise your hand on this, I guess, so we could see it. Who would be in favor of replacing all, all those signs first and then who would be in favor of replacing just the, or just purchasing the west side and reusing the north and south? So first I will ask who's in favor of replacing all of the signage?
Kirsten.
Kirsten, you're gonna have
I'm, I'm for all of them.
Okay, Kirsten?
I'm for all of them.
Okay. And now a show of hands of those who are just interested in doing the, the one sign. Great, we're tied.
Jeff.
So did I see that correctly that we got three and three?
Yeah.
Okay. So here's what I'm going to suggest that we do then. Why don't we just go with the west now? And then we can put the other signs up and then let's consider that at a somewhat future date if we want to replace them.
Yeah, makes sense. We can do it at any time if they don't work.
Yeah, we'll just, we'll save a little bit of money and we can always decide that we can go ahead and get the, the new signage when the world reopens. That'll be my compromise. Anybody have
Phil, I'll get, I'll give it, get with you then to get those signs from you. I'll just bring them over to my shop and reconstruct them. Won't be a big deal.
Good.
Okay.
So, yeah.
And Jeff, and Jeff, you're just gonna paint the background, just a solid color? You're not going to do all that filigree kind of stuff that's in the background, right?
Right, right.
Okay.
Yeah, but I'm going to just use the existing letters because the existing letters were they were post, post-mounted to a piece of plywood. So they were, they were actually raised off of the substrate that they're, that was mounted to the wall. So you don't, it's, it's not going to be a, and they're in great shape, you know, so yeah, I would, I would bother with all that scroll work.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I ask for a motion on this since the agenda allows for action?
Okay, I'll move.
Second.
Very good. Okay, so I'm going to just say all in favor of replace or ordering a new west side logo from was it Meyer Sign Company? And us replacing the existing east or north and, north and south signs.
We'll need a roll call on that.
Hi.
Oh, oh, sorry.
Because we're remote, all votes had to be by roll call.
Yes.
Trustee Sallop.
Yes.
Trustee Wood.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Andreessen.
Yes.
And Trustee Coonzie.
Yes.
Good. That takes us on to item C, which is a motion to approve roof replacement. If I could have a motion on that, please.
I'll make a motion to approve a roof replacement project at the depot to NIR Roof Care in the amount of $14,000.
Second.
Discussion on this.
The only question I have is, do, do we, have, have we made a decision on the color? My only suggestion would be that we go with something as neutral as possible, probably just since it's the architectural shingle, probably just either the, 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 the black or I think there's one called weathered wood and it's kind of a grayish darker color. Only because it would go with what's there now as far as colors, but it was also the most neutral in the event that we want to change it five, six, eight years down the road.
That's the recommendation was to go with the weathered wood.
Yeah, it's, it's most neutral, the weathered wood is, but I, I think actually if I have a, if I have a saying that I guess I would go with the, the black or the charcoal if it is, but simply because it's easiest to work around.
I like the idea of the black as well.
I do too.
Yeah.
I do too.
Yeah, I mean, if we want to change paint five years from now or 10, you know, it's going to be easy because the roof will certainly outlast the paint that's on there now. So we won't run into a snag. If we do some oddball color, it's going to be kind of hard to work with.
I guess
Director Cotter did recommend the charcoal and I changed it to weathered wood. So I'm guilty of that. Yeah, I was worried about fading. I thought the black would fade more quickly and the weathered wood would appear less faded over time. So that was my thought.
Yeah.
So I guess my question is, if we're saying that there's no leaking in this roof, is there a reason why we can't wait till we do our next budget and just put this in the budget like we normally do things? Why are we trying to get this done at the end of the year in a big rush?
Because if we have, we have leaking and then it's going to cost 1.5X to do it next spring.
Wow.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, there's
I guess then why didn't we do this when we made our budget at the beginning of the year? It was, the roof was in the same condition then. Yeah. I guess I don't understand why it became such an issue all of a sudden.
It's a good question, Scott, but that's the condition of that roof has, has been like that for five, six years now. So, you know, whether we do it now or whether we wait till the spring, you know, it's only a few months. If we have time to do it, it only, it should only take two days. So time wise, we've got it. I don't know if our money situation is going to change drastically between now and next budget season, but you know, that's a question for Jennifer and Brandis, I would guess.
Um, well, we, this project, we were very much aware of the need to do some maintenance on the depot. It did not make it into the budget and I don't think it made it past staff as far as a recommendation, although we were well aware of it. I have heard a lot of demand from the business owners and from the downtown folks that would like to see the roof replaced. They kind of see it as the nicer. But the only reason we're proposing it now is really at the request of the village board when we discussed the painting. We're, we, we can certainly wait on it. You're right, Trustee Linum, we will be in a very similar financial situation in May that we are in now. So it, it doesn't really, really matter, but so it's really up to the board. Staff is just providing the information necessary to decide.
For my, for my part, you know, we went ahead and decided to do the painting and give it the facelift, you know? I would say let's just complete the project.
I'd say the same thing and we got some good weather here. Let's get it done.
All right. We have a motion on a second, motion and a second on the floor to approve a roof replacement. Let's see how that goes and if it well, I guess the, the motion on the floor is to, to do it this year. So let's see where that goes and if not, we can modify it and go for next year. So without anything else, Catherine, you want to call the roll?
Trustee Linum.
Yes.
Trustee Sallop.
Yes.
Trustee Wood.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Coonzie.
Okay, yes.
All right. You have financial reports in your package. The only thing I had that I wanted to talk about this evening was we had a dedication for the depot plaque last week, beautiful sunny day. Dolores was there as long, as well as about 20 other people to see the, we'll call it an unveiling. I want to thank everybody that was involved with this. As you probably knew, part of the negotiations for getting the parking lot where the caboose is now, as well as some other improvements in the downtown. One of the considerations that we were asked to do was put up this plaque to more officially recognize the, the group of volunteers that created the depot as well as burying the lift station. It's been a lot of work internally to complete this plaque and I want to thank Catherine for spending the two years, I think, to get the wording on it right. But they are happy. The family was there. Dolores got to give a couple of speeches. I think she was probably the happiest I've seen her in quite a while. She was around. Yep, it was, it was a good day. So if you haven't gone by and seen it yet, it is on the corner by the bike trail right across from her office right next to, under the, the tree there. So on the corner of the depot grounds. And I think we've got one thing left to do, which is to put together copies of the official pronouncement that was made for the depot when Dolores was our state representative and have that on file in the in the, the depot for people to look at. Also, she had brought in tons and tons of pictures over the week and left them in the depot with Bill to, the pictures and photographs that I've never even seen before of the depot. So if you get a chance sometime during the week, pop your head in there and see. It's pretty cool stuff. One other thing for consideration, I've talked to Trustee Linum about this. I don't think we've talked to anybody else. There was a plaque on the east side of the depot that had veterans' names on it. It was mostly falling apart, I would say. The sign was not in good shape. And under my direction, they took the sign down to store it for a while and I'd like you just to consider, I'm not asking for any thought or decision tonight. But think about ideas on what we might want to replace that with. Instead of rebuilding the sign, I guess, because my, my concern is that, you know, having any kind of whether it's a memorial or a signage or a plaque to our veterans is certainly a wonderful thing. I'm concerned that the list is A, not accurate. I don't know how long ago it was and it seems to be possibly World War II and Korean veterans. And I don't know if it's been updated since that long ago. You know, obviously we've had a lot of other situations in our country since that time. And if we're going to put something together, we shouldn't just stop at Korea. So my thought was we have something perhaps digital that we can run on a screen. But then of course we need to get ahold of somebody to try and figure out where's an accurate list and who's going to update this. So you know, rather than just put the sign back up after painting, I think we need to leave it down and think about this for a little bit. If, is there a way that we can appropriate, appropriately list our veterans in town? And, you know, who's going to do the work to maintain that? So just a thought. I think digitally it just would be easier because then we'd just be able to update it.
If we're not able to identify then all of the veterans individually, we can just perhaps think about a plaque honoring all vets in general.
I agree.
That may have served in the Fox Valley area even, or just the Dundee area. And just, you know, recognition to that effect, kind of blanket recognition.
Yeah, that's a good thought. So anyway, I think about that. That's really all I got. Sorry?
Yeah, um, you know, I know we were also looking at you know, that little area is called Veterans Park and it has that sign. Veterans Memorial Park with a train on it. Were we removing that or taking that down or was that part of the rebrand?
We really haven't discussed that at this point.
Yeah.
Which, which park?
There's a sign on the north, let me see if I get this right, the southeast corner.
Yeah.
And so just I can tell you my experience, we, we had a concrete plaque nobody could remember. It was all the way on the, the northeast corner. And we also had one that was right outside of the door to the bathrooms for, for years. It was a brass or a bronze plaque on a piece of concrete. And the problem that, that all these little individual plaques, nobody had any idea who put them there or what they were for.
Sounds about right.
That nobody knows. So unfortunately, me being I don't know what the word would be, but my, my theory on this is, well, you remove the plaque and see who complains. Both of those cases, nobody did. One was an artist.
There tomorrow, nobody would notice.
Yeah.
Your friend.
Yeah, one was being used as a doorstop. The other one had, you know, grass growing out of it. So I just had to move. My usual thing is to call Phil or somebody else and say, hey, just put this in the public works garage and let's see who complains. So I, I would look at that and see if we can gather any information from anybody as to who put it there and, and why it's there. And as, you know, we, when it comes to branding, we don't want the depot to be 12 different things, right?
Right, right. That's my point.
Yeah, it's not a veterans' park per se.
Yeah. It's Depot Park because that's where we say all the events are to go on down to Depot Park, you know?
My thoughts, and I think I had talked to Jennifer about this before the world blew up, was that there, I was driving through, I want to say it was Schaumburg last year and there was a stretch of golf road was had a big sign up there that said honorary veterans memorial parkway. And I thought that maybe we do that on 72 crossing the river and we get West Dundee to do the same thing too. And then we just make that stretch of road, you know, and honorary veterans parkways, that's where they do all the parades anyway.
Yeah.
You know?
Makes sense.
Maybe we put a plaque up by the bridge. I don't.
One of the things doing the branding for the, for the depot, and this has been brought to me by a, a number of, like some of the older families in town. I think it's a good idea. If it is going to be a memorial park, maybe we do something, whether it's like, you know, you could buy a brick table or you could donate a permanent bench in the park or something where, for example, like I would buy something for my mom and dad.
Sure.
Like a loving memory of, you know, Gordy and Ann or something, something like that where, you know, maybe there could be a little bit of a revenue generator that we could put back into the park. And it would be a way for people to kind of, you know, pay respect or
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's, yeah. We, we could talk about how that works. You know, it's not an agenda item tonight, so let's put that off on a, whether it's a committee level or something else, but I like that idea. I've thought about that before, even if it's a way to raise money for the Dundee Township Society that actually, you know, staffs and works the depot to do the brick thing and we could do the benches or something else. I mean, I think that would be great. There's a lot of people who would probably pony up the money to have a park bench with a plaque on them. I just, you know, again, we don't want 16 benches in the downtown, so we have to think about the plan. You know, how many benches would we get? Where would we go? We want to know that beforehand. So, but yeah, all good things. All good things. Okay. So that's all I had. We'll go around the board and see what exciting and wonderful things you guys are up to. Mr. Coonzie?
Um, I had a question about Santa's Village. I saw on Facebook that Santa's Village was saying that we shut down their drive-through trick or treating event. And I'm just wondering, there was no explanation with that. So I was wondering if I can get an explanation of what happened exactly.
Absolutely. Who wants to take, I could take that, but if you want to take that, Jennifer or George, I'll let you.
George, you want to take it?
I do. So I got a call. It was not this past Saturday night. It was the one before that, before Halloween. I got a call Saturday night from the sergeant who told me that there was an unexpected or we didn't know about it, a trunk and treat thing going on in the entire parking lot at Santa's Village. And that it was causing enormous traffic problems. And while, and he described it to me, while he was telling me this, I'm thinking he's got to shut it down. But then he said to me, says, I want you to know I shut it down. And I said, good, bravo. And later he told me that the people in charge of it at Santa's Village told him that they didn't want to tell the village about this ahead of time because the village always throws roadblocks at them. So honestly, I have video. I have video. Yeah, I feel the same way, Jeff. I have video of the traffic problems. Honestly, I feel that we should consider strongly sending them a bill for the police hours that were out there.
You want to talk about how far the backup was down on 25?
Why, I'm, I'm not sure. Do you know?
No, I had heard that it was quite a ways down and that it was all the way down 25 and that there were actually the people that were in the cars, both on the road and in the parking lot were so irritated at the length of time that they had to wait that it was actually causing quite a few road rage issues as well, too.
This is what I've been told also.
So
Oh my God.
We did support them for about an hour and a half and because I did follow up with the sergeant, he sent the report. We only shut it down a half hour early. I also saw that Facebook post. We decided not to engage in the social media debate, but we did see that post, but in reality it was a half hour early. The problem was they had taken reservations. So they were trying to do the right thing. They were trying to control the number of cars. So whoever had a reservation that last half hour could not go. But we didn't know about it. Otherwise, the police could have gotten hand over township volunteers or somebody else to help facilitate it. You know, we certainly su- support anything that can be done with, with coronavirus in mind, but it was just, there was no planning and they had never done it before and they wound the cars through the parking lot in a way that just created backup at the intersection. So we did support them anyway, but we did shut them down early and obviously they weren't pleased with having to shut down a little bit early. That's unfortunate because we, we do want to support them and we would have if they would have contacted us. We would have found a way.
I think the major, the major sticking point was that they were blocking the intersection of 72 and 25 on a Saturday night.
Right. Right.
Yeah, a little troubled actually that their impression of the village is negative. But for my part, I would suggest that we don't bill them for the, the upheaval. At this point, it's water under the bridge, but if they or anybody else wants to, you know, conduct something like that, you know, let us know because maybe we can help out. So I would, I would encourage them to do that. I would, I would encourage them to do that. Then maybe we can, you know. Change Santa's Village or anybody else's, you know, perceptions.
I would agree with that. And I I would also say. I saw a. Information sheet from Flood Brothers about their leaf collection service, which was great. And they did a fine job. So good job for them. But the flyers said that if anybody. Rakes leaves into the street, they're getting a $500 fine. Which maybe Flood Brothers just put this out by their without our help. I don't know, but I would hope we're not. Finding you $500.
Not at all.
Okay, thank you.
We adjusted that language to encourage residents to rake as close to the curb as possible. But no, there will be no citations issued for for this program.
Okay, all right.
We did it was we always raked them in the street and they came by with the street sweeper and sucked.
Well, I it's true. I think I think it's great that they're doing it not on the street because that does provide, you know, cause problems. But yeah, just I don't like threatening. On that thing, but that's fine. Okay, thank you.
I remember years ago riding my motorcycle through, what was it Down River Buff, I think, in Elgin, coming around a corner there and just it was like. The street was just filled with wet leaves. And I remember hitting that corner and going, it's gonna be a long day. So, all right, trust yourself.
No report.
Trust the alignment.
Really, just a couple items, the ones that I've raised before, the stop sign at River and Railroad. If we think we. You know, have gotten anywhere with that or any further discussion, George, I'm sure you could weigh in on that. And then also the dumpster at the fireman's park. I don't know if we, do we need to contact Flood Brothers or is that the fireman, the fire district that we need to contact? I'm not sure, but.
I can update you on the the dumpster. Oh, Chris is here. Chris, go ahead, please, with the dumpster.
You're on mute, Chris.
Just lost them.
Hit all the buttons.
Better?
There you go. Okay. So yes, I contacted the fire district. It is the Fire District Association dumpster that they use for their events. Which they haven't had any events. So. Speaking with Jason, we worked it out where they're going to take that dumpster away. And I contacted Flood Brothers. They're going to provide them with regular trash cans and recycling bins that they could store in that garage. When there isn't an event and then they'll just, for the event, they'll pick it up and so the dumpster will be gone. Even better than putting up a barrier to kind of, you know, off to the side. That's wonderful. So and then the only other, thanks, Chris, the only other item I was. Thought about was, you know, Leo, when you mentioned benches, I was thinking at one time. There have been a number of communities that have put up oddball things like. I think Buffalo Grove had cows or something like that. And there've been a number of towns that have put up. Different statues, all of the same theme and then painted differently and so forth. Novel. But I was thinking, we could put the word out to all the East Dundee woodworkers, every one of them build a bench and we can put them in different locations in the downtown. So just a thought. I'll build one.
All right.
In both of them?
Right, both of us, right.
Trusty Anderson.
No report.
Kirsten.
Well, I think that's a great idea about the benches, Jeff, and I really want to say thanks for. Thank you, Jeff, for all the work that you've done extra above and beyond for the depot.
My pleasure.
It's a, it's a really great thing. And other than that, no report. Thank you.
Trusty Maloney.
Yeah, I echo Kristen's comments and everybody else's to trustee Lyman for the work that he's put in. Through the depot. I also, in addition to the memorial sign with the veterans, there was also a sign. Or there was a window box for that posted community events. That were happening on the outside of the building. I don't know if that was discussed at all on either. Doing a window in a, an electronic sign of some sort. So that as people are coming by, they they. Can access that or if we were planning on building a whole nother new window box, sign, sign box for that.
I think that's a great idea. I've actually thought of that at some point, putting on, you know, doing a cutout, getting a nice. Thick piece of plexiglass there and then mounting a screen behind it so that we can display kind of like what the box in there now does.
Right.
It's up to the 20th century.
A V at right along Barrington Avenue where it's kind of V, so you can kind of see it coming from both ways from the road.
Because. Really something that would be for walk up. I don't really want something that's a distraction or something that the drivers are going to see. What I want is if somebody walks up to the depot, here is a video screen facing out. Of the building that actually shows, you know, the next upcoming events, when they are, what's going on, are we offering specials? Things in the neighborhood, that type of thing. And it could be similar to what we've got inside there where it scrolls the local weather and some other thing. Useful people that are going to be on the bike path or just. You know, people come in and say, hey, what's going on in town? So we could look at that. I'm sure there's people that make kiosks. We haven't discussed that. Why don't we? It's, you know, Jennifer, I'll ask that at some point, somebody on staff do some research on that. And then that's probably something that we could look at doing in, you know, next year's budget as well, too, if we have one.
You can do that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Then also in the warrants, I noticed that we're paying Bill Zelsdorf.
Yes.
For Manning. Is that something new?
It is. Bill, we had had a lot of. I don't know whether I want to call this complaints or criticisms. For whatever reason. A lot of people expected the bathrooms to be open there. Obviously, when we went into our COVID shutdown here. We shut those down. Bill was, you know very well, Bill was not a volunteer. Villa is actually getting paid by the depot organization to be there and run that. We wanted to try and figure out a way that we can keep the bathrooms open sometimes for people that are there as well as. To keep the depot open as long as we do it safely. Bill volunteered to do that, volunteer, meaning he wanted to do that and get paid what the stipend that he was getting paid by the depot organization. So it's not much and I agree that we could do that for the month of October and November.
Okay.
All right, I don't think.
And then we'll.
Well.
Take another look at that.
If it's going to be something that's going to be long term, then we need to discuss it. But as you know, with the closing of the depot market and the. All that stuff, there's no income coming into that group, so they certainly can't pay him. We could hire somebody. Depot, however, he's already doing it as the experience and we probably have to pay them more money anyway. So the thought was let's just open the door for a couple of months. You know, the the bike path. Close down and after, after November, I guess.
So at this point, it's through the end of the year or through the end of November?
The end of November at this point, yeah.
All right. And then the only other thing was if there was any, and I know it's pretty quick, if there was any other update on the truck route only or no truck only routes. On Bonnie Dundee that I brought up last meeting. If not, it can be answered later.
Or through the downtown.
I don't believe we have an update on that yet. We have not discussed that yet.
Okay, all right.
Well.
We'll bring that back when we have some thoughts on that. Okay, that does it for the board. Let's go through staff. Administrator Johnson.
First, I'll touch on real quick trustee Lyman's question about the stop sign at River and Railroad. So we have been discussing that request and chief carpenter was going to go to Quatum. To get the accident reports. Because we do have to do the necessary engineering. To determine whether a stop sign is warranted. I don't, I don't think it's going to. Be a warranted stop sign. And I just want to let you know, we're going to go through the process and do the work. But I'm not sure there is a demand for a stop sign from an engineering perspective, but we will, we are exploring that and we will let you know. About how that goes. The other thing I wanted to make sure I touched on was obviously the coronavirus is spiking. The positivity rate in Elgin. Very recently was 28%. So things are obviously looking not great. We have some noncompliant businesses. And we have basically been instructed by the Kane County Health Department, Department to report. The noncompliance and that is what we are doing. However, I wanted to let you know that I I did hear. The state's attorney for the county speaking in an interview. And I also heard at a recent press conference with the governor. And both of those entities at the county level and the state level indicated they would not be using law enforcement. And they are not asking for law enforcement and that they believe that talking to the businesses will achieve compliance. I tend to agree that that will be the case sometimes and sometimes not. So, but we are sitting back waiting. I think the election may. Change things a little bit depending on the outcome. I don't know if the state is ready to take some other sort of action. Once the election is over at at the state level, I believe that may be a factor, but. I wanted to let you know that we are aware that businesses are noncompliant and. If anybody approaches you or is upset about it, just refer to us. We will talk to them. But it, there's quite a few in town. And they're either operating inside or they're operating beyond the hours and or both. So we know about them. We've reported them, but I'm not sure there's a lot of enforcement that's going to happen at the county level.
Well, Lauren, can I ask what the point is? I mean, if there's not going to be any law enforcement to it, a number of judges in this state have already struck down Pritzker's order. And there is no basis in law to substantiate it. Why are we going to risk causing friction with our businesses? If there's really nothing that will come of it?
I think what I really. Yeah, well, we're not causing friction. And that's what I, that's what I'm telling you. And I think that there may be some change in the enforcement after the election at the state level. But that's to be seen. I can't answer what the point is because it's it's not our order. It's the governor's order. And also the county, a county judge made a ruling for Foxfire in Geneva, but. Obviously, that's not a state level or federal level ruling. So. We do have that order, which is. Almost giving a green light for businesses to be open. But it it will be appealed. It will be appealed. That ruling will be appealed. So I don't know trustee Lyman, what the point is. I can't answer that question. I can just tell you, we've been instructed to report. Noncompliance to the county and that is how we're handling it because we don't have a way of handling it. We don't, we haven't been given tools.
Okay, but I would like to go on record as saying, I think that's the wrong decision. I don't think we should be reporting our businesses because they're not complying with an unenforceable law or unenforceable rule. It isn't a law. And I really, I really think that this is going to come back to bite us.
At the federal have said that it's enforceable.
No, it isn't.
I I know this, this is a very heated discussion and I know that everybody's got their opinions, but now is not the time. We're not going to solve this. Okay. This is not something.
Don't want to spend time doing Pritzker's work for him, that's all.
We're not. Thank you.
Okay.
That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, very good. Chief. You were on mute.
I thought, thank you. I thought I'd use this opportunity to say a few words because I get questions about election security. And I've been feeling vaguely anxious throughout today and that's unusual for me. And it, it might be because of the election that's around the corner. But here in this region, a consortium of local organ, local police departments and county. And state police and federal agencies also has been formed and they are called the. Fox Valley Metropolitan Area Command. And they're they're housed right now in the Aurora Emergency Management. Emergency Operations Center. And they're there to. Collect intelligence information and share it with us. And right now there's no, no intelligence information that I'm aware of about planned. And demonstrations or opposition, but they will remain open. And monitoring the situation for the next at least week. I suspect it will go longer than that. And I've, I've, Leo, I've been in touch. With the chiefs of police in Carpenter'sville and in West Dundee, since that's where our residents vote. And if they have a need, we are prepared to dispatch a squad car to help them out if they have a need. Both tomorrow and in the the subsequent week or so. Are there any questions about that?
Where? If if the voting goes, I mean, the voting is probably going to go longer than tomorrow. So where is? Is, are the, is the voting counting going to continue at these poll sites or do they go down to the county? Do the machines and the and everything else go down to the county building?
I'm not in a position to answer that question.
Okay.
Typically, the county clerk has short term license agreements. It's like a lease that just lasts for the day of election day. And they're required to install their equipment that morning and have everything removed by the end of the day, Kathleen. So the expectation would be that they would move all the material back and all the data, mail in ballots and so on would be at the clerk's facility, not at the remote. Polling locations because the owners of those properties, you know, schools and other units of government need to get back to the business starting on Wednesday morning.
Cool. Great. Thank you.
Just to clarify, the in-person voting has a time limit at which point it ends and that machinery all goes away. The timeframe after that, each state is different. Illinois says that you must. Postmark by election day, but they can still receive it. I believe it's, is it 14 or 15 days after that? So that would, those, those would be mailed into Kane County where that would continue. So their machinery there obviously can can stay. Okay.
Yeah, or the drop boxes or whatever. Got it. Okay, you.
All right, where were we? Chief, anything else?
Jennifer, did you want me to say a word about the squad cars?
Yes, if you're prepared to, sure.
But I'm looking for Brad because I'm going to need his help. I don't see him in the meeting. Oh, okay. Okay. So in early September, you might remember that we had. Two of our squad cars parked on the road. Just outside of town. They were in county territory and they were giving field sobriety tests to a suspected drunk driver. When an uninvolved drunk driver. High rate of speed creamed both of our squad cars. Totaling one of them and not a single item of equipment in that squad car was salvageable. The other, the other car, nobody was hurt. Nobody was hurt. And so. We've placed the order for two new squad cars and there's a wait of four to six months. But I guess the concern is what is the. How much funding Brad did we get from the insurance? And I certainly have a good idea. It's about $32,000 for the squad car and usually around seven or eight thousand for equipment that goes into it, radios. Rifle, evidence, equipment and so forth. So one of the cars, we salvaged most everything that was in it, but the other car, no. So that gives you a good idea of what our cost is going to be for the new squads. Brad, you gave me some excellent material here, but I'm, I'm afraid I really don't understand it.
Yeah, so the. Through our insurance, we submitted these and we have $1,000 deductibles. So with one of the squads, we got about 15,375 back. And then the next squad, we got just over 31,000 back.
Oh, that's, okay, okay. All right, all right.
We just wanted to report that to the board because this came up earlier. And we did due to the. Uh, we just wanted to report that to the board because this came up earlier. Um, and we did, due to the critical uh, need, we did go ahead and authorize the purchase, um, but we just wanted to make sure that you understood what our out-of-pocket costs would be.
Chief, can I ask you, was the at-fault driver insured?
Brad, do you have that information?
Uh, he did provide insurance, but it's going through the uh, um, you know, the process and insurance right now. Um, you know, what they put on the report necessarily doesn't mean anything um, until they go through the process and verify a lot. So, um, we're gonna try to recoup the costs or subrogation, um, and our insurance is working on that.
Cool. Okay. All right, Village Attorney.
No report this evening, thank you.
Building Department.
No report.
Very good. Finance. You're on, you're on mute, Brandis.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
All right, um, so the August um, 2020 monthly report is included in the agenda packet. Um, as you can see from the report, revenues have come in pretty well for August um, compared to uh, even last year's um, numbers were over $400,000 over what we received um, from last month, uh, or last year, August, um, same period. Um, and basically, we're attributing that to um, people who are home more, so they're using more electricity, more gas, um, so our utility revenue from MyCore um, and Comet, uh, those revenues have drastically increased. Um, for August, it was over $200,000. Um, we also received um, building permit uh, revenues, which were not accounted for in our initial budget. Um, expenditures are down um, in the general fund. Um, our one large payout for the year, or for this um, monthly report was for our um, police pension, the first half of the police pension uh, payout, which was uh, $345,640. And that was for uh, June and July's uh, property taxes. Um, let's see, for the other funds, expenses um, have been pretty steady. Um, no major expenditures from out of those funds. Oh, I'm sorry, we did pay um, PAL notes uh, in the amount of $473,182,000 um, for the Chris, or Dundee Drive, uh, Dundee Crossing Tiff Note um, and the Christina Drive Tiff Note. And you can see the breakdown of those two Tiff Note payments uh, on page two and the top of page three of the monthly report. Um, as with the revenue in the general fund, the water and sewer revenue, um, they're not, we don't see a decrease as we had initially projected for the month. Um, the revenue is steady. In fact, um, it's slightly higher than what we would typically see for the month. Um, and again, I attribute it to people being home, um, washing their hands more due to the pandemic, um, and using more water. Uh, and that's pretty much it. I don't know if anyone has any questions, but overall, revenue's up, expenditures are down, um, and we're pretty much just spending what we had initially budgeted for. Um, and if you remember during our budget uh, cycle, we pretty much cut our budget down to the bare bones. So we're only spending um, what's absolutely necessary. Um, and that's it for me.
How's the new finance offer?
Uh, so actually, this month, uh, starting tomorrow, we are um, starting the setup and training, and that will be for the next couple months, so at least three months, that will be every day. Um, so department heads hate me right now, but um, in the next month or so, they will love me because they'll be able to actually use the software in the way that it's intended, but um, we haven't quite gotten there yet.
Okay.
Uh, I had a question. You know, when we made the budget this year, uh, there were several items that were tentatively put on hold.
Mm-hmm.
When do we know if we're gonna go through with those items or not? Are we just gonna wait till next year and then add them to next year's budget if we have the revenue to do it, or what is the plan for that?
Do you have anything specific that you're thinking of?
No, I don't. I'm just, I guess, I'm just generally thinking because we, we made this budget and we had, we had this subset of items that were supposed to be in the budget, but at the last second got taken out uh, and were tentatively taken out, as I remember it, and, and we may get them depending on, on revenue. And what I'm hearing right now is that revenues are higher than what uh, we expected. So I'm wondering, you know, when do we, when do we make those decisions? How do we make those decisions?
Answer that question for you, um, Trustee Coonsey. So, um, my recommendation um, is that we take a six-month review. Um, we have a lot more information now than we had before. Uh, some of the information is good. We're getting $189,000. Some of the information is bad. We're only getting $189,000. Um, so I think what we're, we need to do is at the six-month point, uh, we need to find how close we are to uh, projections.
Well, the, the $189,000 you're talking about was from the county? Is that the 189 you're talking about?
Correct.
We, we spent that, right? We said we were gonna redo these streets, and that's how we, we spent that. That's a different uh, you know, list than what we had put on hold when we made the budget, I thought.
Right.
Those streets weren't, those streets weren't in the budget, and, and now we've, we've used that money, money uh, for those streets, which is, which is fine, but I'm just saying, there's, there's items that are still out there that, you know, how do we know?
Yeah, actually, the road improvement project um, was in the budget. That was one of the deferred items.
Oh, okay.
So, um, when we found out we were getting $189,000, and due to the timing of when you need to do a street improvement project, um, that is why we brought that one to the board first. So we didn't spend all of that, those funds, but we didn't intend to spend all those funds. Um, but we do know that we were projecting a $3 million loss, so $189,000 isn't uh, obviously significant um, as far as our bottom line. So at the six-month point, um, we can review our projections and see how close we were. Um, I can tell you, I think we're gonna be far better um, than we projected, because we were very conservative in our projections. But on the, on the negative side, I can tell you that our conservative estimates are going to extend longer than we thought due to the prolonged um, life of the coronavirus pandemic and the fact that we will lose some of our businesses. Um, if San Antonio Village is one of those, for example, um, that's gonna hit our bottom line. If a car dealership is one of those, um, that's gonna hit our bottom line. So, we're not quite to the point where we can make that recommendation, but we will. Um, and we are fortunate also that the two squad cars were deferred, um, but we're getting two new squad cars, so for, for our-
Total was the brand-new one, was it not?
Yeah, yeah, so it's really just one, yes. It's really just one. Um, I was just kind of kidding, but um, so-
All right, good job.
But we will take, we will take a, a hard look at that, you know, now that we have, I feel like we have a lot more information than we did a few months ago.
Okay.
But just as a general practice, I think we should keep in mind that anytime there are surpluses in any of the budgets, we might look to um, add to our reserves rather than look for areas to spend it. Just cause we have it doesn't mean we have to. So, I think, you know, especially in the public works area, water, sewer, that kinda thing, roads, be good to pad those reserve accounts if we can.
Mm-hmm. And another thing, um, as a reminder, we intended to use about $1.7 million in reserves. Um, so I don't think we'll have to lose all of that if, if our projections were more conservative than reality. Um, also, we are completing, in the process of completing our audit, ending uh, fiscal year 20, which was April 30th, 2020, um, and our cash flow, uh, our, our cash balances uh, are up significantly. So we had another great year, ending 2020, so that, that, all of that information pulled together will tell you what we, what we have. But we do have, we did anticipate to use reserves to balance this budget. Um, hopefully, we'll have to use a lot less, and we do have a fund balance policy that requires that we take those surpluses and push them back into the reserve, Jeff. So, we will make sure we continue to do that and not spend um, where we don't need to.
Good.
I was just add to that, um, starting in a few weeks, we will be working on our next budget cycle, so um, it may be um, more beneficial and more practical to kind of wait and see um, you know, what projects are down the line or uh, department heads may want to present to you for next year, um, before trying to squeeze them in for this year.
Okay, good.
The idea of using reserves to balance a budget is a little unnerving for me. So, I mean, that's kinda like, you know, taking on debt just to make expenses.
Well, we weren't planning on doing that until we lost all of our sales tax revenue for three months.
I got it, I got it.
That's why, that's why you have reserves. They're not for putting-
I know, I know, but at the same time-
It is truly a rainy day fund, and if it wasn't a rainy day, I don't know what is.
One of those big pumps going in the, in the new pumping station, that's a rainy day.
That too, all right. Uh, Bill, our Public Works.
I'd like to give you a quick update on our street uh, resurfacing and patching program. Um, as you may have read in today's Depot Life, we are going to be closing down River Street uh, Thursday into Friday this week to resurface that uh, 300 block of River Street and the other streets that were identified in uh, in my cover memo, which would include Will Matt and Bonnie and Dundee and King and so on. Those will all be resurfaced and patched on Saturday and Friday. So we've got some, some gray weather for patching and uh, resurfacing, and uh, so we're excited to uh, get that project underway. Hopefully completed this week, that's the, that's the plan, so.
Good. Have we talked to the businesses on River Street?
I dropped off letters, uh, hand-delivered letters, uh, construction notices to each of the nine or 10 storefronts on that 300 block this afternoon. Most of the folks are not there, obviously they closed on Monday, so um, I left my cell phone number on those notices, and we'll certainly try to reach out to them if they don't contact me. I did talk to one, one business for sure, so.
Okay.
Resurfacing River Street makes a real strong case for doing the roof on the depot now. It'll look really nice all the way around.
All right.
Rather than waiting. Just a thought.
I thought we approved it.
We did.
Yeah, I know. Just in case anybody was still, you know, edgy about it.
You did decide-
I think we, it was unanimous.
Do we wanna talk about a color for the street, or are we going with black?
Cobblestone.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anything more from the Public Works?
Nothing more at this time.
Very good. Village Engineer, Joe, you're on mute.
Uh, no report, nice.
Very good. All right, we do not have an executive session this evening, so unfortunately, we're going to have to ask for a uh, motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
We have a second.
Sorry.
Very good. Catherine? You're on mute. Catherine called her all for adjournment.
Trustee Linum?
Yes.
Trustee Sella?
Yes.
Trustee Wood?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yep.
All right, very good.
President Miller.
Yes. All right, folks, that's it for this evening.
I'm also, yes.
We'll see you later.
Good night.
Thank you, good night.
Okay, night, everybody.